Agenda, we're prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on an item that's brought up under item 1A, but is an important opportunity for public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to speak to the council on this or any other item tonight, to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available near the front door. And turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the yellow card requests all the way up until the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's concluded and the council questions, public comment and discussion has begun, we don't take any additional cards. So if you're here to speak about a specific item, please be sure to get the card in as soon as possible, but certainly before the conclusion of the staff report. And then finally, we know that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety. So we try to create civil discourse here in the chamber, and that's if there not be any boos or cat calls, or actually any applause or other demonstrations in order to make it a comfortable place for civil discourse among neighbors and citizens here in our community. All right, with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A. The first is by Pat Flint.
Mr. Mayor, I would like permission to address legal counsel, if I may, just to ask a question, and I know he cannot answer it.
Yeah, you're welcome to put the question on the record. We will answer it.
Are there rules, laws, or regulations that prevent city council members from dialoguing or addressing the public at a city council meeting, especially during public hearings or public workshops? If not, I respectfully ask council to answer our questions in public and ask staff, if you can't answer them, to ask staff to address them. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with West Sacramento for the record. And I figure, since I'm having trouble getting any response from our big retailers, and the ones that do sell shopping carts for the public, they're just not strong enough. They don't hold up. They've got cotter pin holes on the rods inside the wheels, and you load them up with groceries, especially the can and other liquid stuff in the jars. Why, they cause the wheels to break off. And so I'm calling for not only a stronger cart, but as long as I wrote a letter to this company that either makes or distributes the carts, and I got this information from the retired Public Employees Association, who got it off the computer for me. And so I figure as long as we're calling for a stronger cart, let's call for a better fitting cart, one that fits on the buses and the light rail better. So I call it a suitcase-shaped shopping cart. So it'd be about half as thick as the one I have, and a half again is tall, but it would fit between the forward-facing seats, and we wouldn't have to compete with the wheelchairs and the scooters on the bus. So we wouldn't have to get off in their favor necessarily, because too often, a bus or a light rail, they have the seating space, or they would have space for that kind of a cart. But people like myself have to remove ourselves to make way for wheelchairs and scooters. And so, again, oftentimes, they have space, but they don't have the right kind of space on the buses and the light rail. But if the shoppers were equipped with the right size and shape of shopping carts, as I call them, the suitcase-shaped shopping carts, why, there would be fewer cases of being passed up, and they would serve the shoppers more effectively. And they shouldn't cost anymore. You should be able to make one for $25 or $30. And so you just have to get the right letter to the right people. And already, they don't allow it on the light rail. They've got this little sign that I've made a picture of. So I say it's time to upgrade the shopping carts in more ways than one. Make them more fitting and make shopping easier. And it's all right if older folks go shopping for groceries three times a week. It's good exercise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, thanks. That's all the comments we have under item 1A. Let me just point out the issue, the conduct of the council meeting, the structure of the council meeting, not legal, considering on how we conduct our business. The council does follow the model procedures that are articulated by both the legal cities and actually the California School Boards Association as well, which, in all cases, don't create the meetings in a format of constant back-and-forth dialogue. Those are principles of effective trusteeship that are modeled across, all across the country, actually, that we've adopted as custom and practice here at the council. All right, I don't want to be as counsel communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Kristoff?
A couple, very quickly. West SacSafco, we did have a special meeting last week, and we made a counter offer on one piece of property. And we are still in negotiations with the other property owners so that we can complete the levy improvements that are necessary for the protection of our community. And then we also met, let's see, it was Regional SAN. We met last Thursday. It was last Thursday? And, no, I'm sorry, it was last Wednesday. And it was just an update on our project, and there were really no significant changes or significant issues that were raised. So the meeting was really very short, but at the same time, this is such an important project for not only our community, but the entire region, that we continue to meet and get updated on the main sewer treatment facility.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Ms. Andine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, the Sacramento Yolo Port District Commission and the Board of Directors of the Sacramento Yolo Port Financing Corporation met. We approved a contract extension for our state advocacy services. We also received a presentation from city staff on the draft development agreement terms for the Stone Lock property in Southport. And finally, we considered a proposal to request a $2.1 million loan from the City of West Sacramento to finance support's acquisition of the Stone Lock development property. We moved that forward with a modification to loan term striking Article 1, Section 1.3B of the terms and the related clauses. And then, so that's one report. On July 20, Friday, July 24, the city had the great honor of welcoming the Walk-in U.S. Talk-in Japan delegation. We hosted them in the city for actually a number of hours. We met at the West Sacramento Community Center, and city manager, the city manager gave a presentation. I was able to give a welcome. They were here for about a week, a group of nine folks in the delegation, and they talked about, well, the program is to promote understanding of Japan by having experts in various fields communicate with us and discuss Japanese society, economy, women in management positions, politics, business, and culture. We also, at our visit with them, so they visited a number of places, including Sacramento State University, but they spent time here with us in the city. We shared with them our food hub programs and invited some business leaders to join us. The reason why I wanted to mention this, though, is they presented the city with a nice medal. The leader of the group is actually from the Office of Global Communications in their Prime Minister's office. And so, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to present this to you from them.
Very nice. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Andine, for representing us there as well. And I know the city manager, and we've had an extensive Asia outreach program, both through the city and the port, as part of our food hub and global commerce strategy as well. So appreciate your leadership and that work.
And I also, it was really Diane Richards, who's senior program manager, and we also had one of our interns from the internship program was there as well, representing the city. Thank you.
Mayor Portembladesma?
Thank you. I just wanted to report on one meeting, board meeting for the Yolo Habitat Conservancy Board, which was on July 20, related to some administrative items that came through there. And the most important thing was, the second administrative draft comments have come in. I want to thank our staff for submitting our comments to them in a timely fashion. All the agencies, participating agencies participated in the feedback, as well as many others in the community. So we're starting to pull that together. We are still on track for a timeline perspective on the project, although there are a couple of funding issues we're having to deal with, potential grant delays that may come up. So, again, but we're still pressing forward. A lot of work still being done between the federal agencies and ourselves. Just want to update the council that that work still is going very well and on track. That's all I have to report.
Mr. Kristoff, I'm sorry, I forgot one. How could I forget LAFCO? LAFCO met last week, and the major issue, or the major item of discussion, was the evaluation of the LAFCO Chief of Staff, or the LAFCO person in charge of LAFCO, Christine. And we met, and we had some discussions as far as work schedule and compensation, and all the different issues that surround her position. So, and all of us on LAFCO were very supportive of what Christine is doing, and we're very pleased with the route that LAFCO is taking, and the input that we do have.
And a couple, two weeks ago, I think I reported that it was going to happen to the council previously. I represented the government of the United States and the cities of the U.S. at the Global Expo in Italy for a presentation on food innovation in American cities. Specifically asked to talk about urban farming, urban agriculture, urban farm career pathways, and some of the other work that we were doing there at the invitation of the State Department. And so made a series of presentations and panels at the U.S. Pavilion at the Expo around our strategy, but more fundamentally about West Sacramento's place. And, you know, because the obvious question for a lot of folks is, where? Where are you from? It was a really good opportunity and platform to promote the city's assets in the food space. So urban agriculture and the work that we're doing on urban farming was of great interest to folks in throughout Europe and Africa and Asia in particular. And then met several folks from some of the global commerce agencies and major food companies, and from some cities in Europe and Asia around our food hub, more generally beyond our urban farm piece, but with respect to the port, the major companies that we already have here, and some of the opportunities for additional job growth and goods movement with our city. So it was a very productive, it was a big honor, but it was a very productive session for advancing the city's economic development agenda in conjunction with the kind of work that Ms. Andine reported on and the city manager did earlier this year across the Pacific as well. We've also received an invitation from the White House to be a tech hire, to become a tech hire city. The tech hire is the initiative from the President and the Secretary of Labor around the future of the technology-related workforce, not just in technology companies, but throughout the economy. Both the strength of that workforce, the diversity and inclusiveness of that workforce, and is invited, I think there are now 20 tech hire cities across the country, and they've invited us. We're working on a partnership with Way Up in Sacramento, which would be a unique Oak Park, West Sacramento partnership that would score well in their system. One reason why this is important, in addition to giving us some tools and some entree for some other resources, is that the president's reserved, I think, $100 or $200 million for tech hire grants in the next few months that will be announced to support these kind of regional hubs. And so we're trying to set ourselves up for some funding in that regard. So that's a, we'll be submitting a formal application through FutureEd and Way Up, but it will ultimately need to come to the city as a core partner of that project if the council agrees. Next week, we'll be hosting the Assistant Secretary of the U.S. Department of Commerce, the Assistant Secretary in charge of the Economic Development Administration, who will be here. And we'll be talking about opportunities in food, in food manufacturing, and other topics where we might be able to be supportive of their larger agenda, but where they can continue to be supportive through investments and technical resources in our economic development activities. So that's, and Congressman Metzou has arranged that visit. The Assistant Secretary is a former mayor, and he's really interested in the kinds of municipal activities that we're engaged in around manufacturing, economic development. The streetcar policy steering committee met last week. Ms. Andine, on behalf of the Yolo County Transportation District, and then Mr. Johansson and I, on behalf of the city, were present at that meeting. We got an update from the City of Sacramento on their quote-unquote "Plan B" alternatives that they're scoping for their next steps following the vote in the special district that they had crafted a couple of months ago to deal with their, a portion of their share of the streetcar financing. And they've narrowed it down to a couple of Plan B alternatives, all of which have, you know, have lots of potential and will work. They all take more time. So I think the upshot from the City of Sacramento is that we'll have several more months now of processing in order for the project to stay on track. It's not a big challenge. We were trying to work towards the federal appropriation that the president had proposed for the project, and the Congress has not acted on that proposal. So we're not, we're not under the time gun that we might have otherwise. So it's not, it's not a major challenge with us, and the environmental process and the engineering and everything else has to proceed anyway. So that was encouraging that they're continuing to refine their strategy, but it will take a set of additional months. We had a, you know, beginning extensive discussion about the cars, the actual streetcar equipment. This is an issue that Mr. Johansson has been raising and pinching on for almost since the beginning of this project around innovation in the space of the kinds of equipment, and the lines or wireless nature of potential streetcar equipment. We're going to be having a full session just on this issue for the policy committee in the next couple of months as well. And then the last piece is the governance structure and agreements associated with the streetcar project. Because it is a two-city and two-transit district project, we're continuing to refine that. There's a subcommittee of the policy committee that's working on governance issues around the project as well. So we expect to have more of those items coming back to the two councils, and to the RT and the Yolo County Transportation District over the next couple of months. So that's it. So if there's no other council communications, item 1C's appointment supports commissioned, we have none tonight. So that brings us to item 2, which is a presentation of a proclamation honoring A.J. Tendak for his service on the Housing Advisory Commission. Is there a motion on the proclamation?
It's all moved.
It's been moved by Mayor Portembladesma, and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. And proclamation is adopted. Join me at the podium, Mr. Tendak. I hope there's extra whereas. Do you want them all? All of them. All right. Well, I'm very pleased to present this proclamation on behalf of the city council. A.J. is presenting for his work on the Housing Advisory Commission, but he's well-known in the community for his active advocacy and support work for regional bicycling through SECOG and through other efforts, through May's Bike Month, but particularly in West Sacramento, as the, one of the owners and founders and tap workers at Bike Dog Brewery right here in West Sacramento. So it's, he's been an active community member in many, many ways, and so it's a pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of the city council honoring A.J. Tendak for his service on the Housing Advisory Commission. Whereas, A.J. Tendak was first appointed to the Housing Advisory Commission in January of 2011. And whereas during his tenure on the Housing Advisory Commission, he assisted the commission in reviews and recommendations to the city council and redevelopment agency for such items as the First Time Homebuyer Program, the Cal Home Funding Applications, the Community Development Block funding applications, issues surrounding homelessness, emergency shelter ordinance and regulations, amendments to the city's inclusionary housing program, the neighborhood stabilization programs, the housing element policies and programs, the homebuyer assistance program guidelines, the residential rehabilitation program guidelines, the home replacement and rehabilitation program guidelines, and the Washington Neighborhood Housing Analysis. And whereas, A.J. was a strong advocate for the betterment of the community's housing, and whereas he has served the community with insight and vision for four years as a member, including two years as chairperson and vice-chairperson of the Housing Advisory Commission. Whereas, A.J.'s involvement on the Housing Advisory Commission demonstrates his belief that involvement is the key to success, now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the City of West Sacramento hereby recognizes A.J. Tendak for his hard work and dedication while serving on the Housing Advisory Commission and does honor him with this proclamation. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Thank you, A.J.
Thank you, the honor to serve the city.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 3 through 11. The city manager has requested that we continue item 7, remove it from tonight's agenda and continue it to August 19. Without objection, that'll be the order. We do have one request for public comment on that item, so we'll take the comment even though we're not going to take the agenda. So Mr. Alcalde doesn't have to come back if he doesn't want to on that, on the second night. So we're going to be continuing consideration of that item, but we'll take that up in a moment. On item 9, the city managers provided to the council the proposed modifications of the loan agreement and promissory note that were proposed by the Port Commission as well. So those are the two, the two proposed changes to the consent agenda. Are there any other items that members of the council wishes to remove or question or comment? Okay. Then item 7 is consideration of the next phase of Bright Park Master Plan. As I said, we're going to continue the item, but prior to doing so, I'll take public comment. So Carlos Alcalde, welcome.
Hi. Glad to see you all. I'll just be brief. I know this is going to be continued to the 15th. But I was going to mention, I am, the issue with charter came, I think it was very distinct very recently in Sacramento. We had the issue with the $255 million contribution to the Sacramento Kings, and that actually went to court in two or three cases. One of the cases had to do with the right of the voters of Sacramento to be able to vote on whether or not they should give $255 million of taxpayer money to construct a Kings Arena. It was widely believed in Sacramento that that would not pass, that if it went to the voters, as it had gone to the voters on prior occasions, it would fail miserably again. So there had to be a way devised to circumvent the voters and not allow a vote. Well, one of the cases-
Mr. Portembladesma, can I just, we're on the Bright Park item?
Oh, I thought I was on item 7.
Yeah, item 7 is the Bright Park one.
Oh, okay. It's the August 15?
Item 14, the charter item, is still on the agenda, so we'll be getting to that later. The Bright Park item is item 7.
Excuse me.
I thought it might all come together, but wasn't sure, so, okay, great, thanks. All right, if there's no further question or comments on consent, is there a motion? It's been moved by Mr. Johansson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mayor Portembladesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Absent item 7. That brings us to item 12, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 15-33, a resolution to vacate a portion of seller's way right-of-way and retain a public utility easement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of our Development Engineering Division in Community Development. This is Mauricio Mesa-Pedraza, and he will be presenting this item to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Mauricio Mesa-Pedraza with the Community Development Department. This item seeks your approval of Resolution 1533, which seeks to abandon a portion of seller's way right-of-way and retain a public utility easement. Utility companies, police, fire, and the Public Works Department have reviewed the abandonment and have shown no objections. The configuration of the remaining right-of-way will provide a hammerhead turnaround for emergency vehicles. Access to existing utilities will remain by retaining a public utility easement. On July 15, city council approved Resolution 1532, which was an notice of intent to vacate a portion of seller's right-of-way. All postings and notifications required by the state and municipal code have been satisfied. And with this, I conclude my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Are there any questions at this time? All right, seeing none, then we're open to the public hearing on this item? It says that in the header. I don't see it in, it's not in the recommendation. So is this a public hearing item? It is, all right. All right, so we're open to the public hearing on item 12. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return it back to the council. Any further questions, discussion, or motion?
I'll move the recommended item, and welcome officially.
Oh, yes, you're right, okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, that motion carries. I made a mistake with respect to a request for public comment on item 8, so if-
You can, within the same meeting, if you want to reconsider that item?
Yeah, so I'd like to, I'd like to move reconsideration of the consent agenda for the purpose of essentially undoing that action, so we can take public comment without prejudice to the ultimate action. So I would move, I would move that.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. There's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The consent agenda is reconsidered, so the consent agenda as before is. Item 8 is a consideration of agreements with SES Engineers and Opera and Barco LLP related of Pioneer Bluff deindustrialization activities. Ms. Flint?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it in time.
No, that was entirely my fault.
Okay. There's, I have some questions. Who owns that piece of property? And I believe it's the city. And I'm having trouble understanding why the city is loaning money to the port to purchase a piece of property that I believe is owned by the city, so that the port can sell it to the Cordish Corporation, and then the port is going to pay the city loan back.
All right, Ms. Flint, I think you're talking about item 9, not item 8. So let me read item 9, just so we're on the right. Between the two of us, we're-
I'm having trouble following this, I guess. Okay.
Luckily, tonight, we don't have any students observing how a meeting's supposed to happen. All right, so item 9 is consideration of a $2.1 million loan to the Sacramento Yolo Port District to finance the port's acquisition of the Stone Lock development property.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, it's kind of a problem.
So, anyway, and my thinking is, is if the city owns the property, they're going to loan the money to the port to purchase the property, to sell it to the Cordish Corporation. Does that mean that, in that respect, if the port owns it at that time, the city can give him incentives to build? And then, like I say, it's just very, it's very confusing, and it sounds like a shell game, when you really get into the nitty-gritties, if the city owns the property. And how much is it going to cost the taxpayers for it to go back and forth like this? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I'll see if I can take this one. The property is currently owned by the successor agency, which is the successor to the Redevelopment Agency. Sorry?
Oh, just to the council, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, correct. It's currently owned by the successor agency. Under the terms of the Redevelopment dissolution statutes, the successor agency is required to unwind all property transactions. There had been a transaction done some years ago where the success, where the Redevelopment Agency granted an option originally to the port for the port to be able to purchase this property. That option was assigned to the Cordish Company. The Cordish Company now proposes to assign the option back to the port. So the Cordish Company will get no money out of this transaction. The $2.1 million would be a loan from the city to the port, so that the port could then pay that money to the successor agency. And then, money received by the successor agency is then distributed to the taxing entities, including the city, but also the county and the school district and the mosquito abatement district. So that's really the transaction here. It's, it is a method of getting the property from the redevelopment successor agency to the port, and then the port will be in a position to find a purchaser ultimately for the, and a developer for the property.
I'm not sure that's that much clearer than the written. I mean, just to, I mean, to be, try to put a finer point on that, this is a piece of property that the city, through the Redevelopment Agency, has held for quite some time. The governor's action to eliminate redevelopment put the property into limbo. The port took the, essentially acquired it for, to get it out of limbo. Now it needs to get it to a place where it can be actually developed. So it's essentially coming back to the city through that, through that process. So the extent to which there's a, it looks like shells, it's because of the, of the state actions on redevelopment that's required several transactions to occur, but none of, this transaction does not involve a private party that will be, that will be achieving, you know, getting anything out of it. Simply returning this essentially to, almost to the status quo as it existed, you know, eight years ago.
And I just might add, this really is a good deal for the city. I mean, that property is certainly worth more. I'll put it this way. Some believe that property is worth more than $2.1 million. So if we can assist the port because of their financial situation, they can in turn give us that property, then we can sell it for, hopefully, a lot more than what we've paid for it, and we'll continue the real development process, and Cordish will be out.
All right, so with that, then, let's return to the Consent Agenda. May I ask for a motion on the Consent Agenda again? It's been moved by Mayor Protemla Desma, seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, that then brings us to Item Thirteen, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 15-5 regarding proposed amendments to Chapter Seventeen of the West Sacramento Municipal Code to prohibit fueling stations in the waterfront zone. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, Mayor Cavolden and members of the City Council. Tonight's item is a change to the zoning ordinance to remove fueling stations from the waterfront zone. This item basically implements one of the directions that was approved when the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan was approved, as one of the recommendations in that plan was to remove fueling stations from the waterfront zone. In July, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item and voted unanimously to adopt a resolution recommending that the council approve ordinance 15-5 to implement that change. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Kristoff.
Kathy, on our regular agenda, Agenda Item Number Eight, agreements with C, I mean, SCS Engineers and OPR and Varco LLP related to Pioneer Bluff deindustrialization. Have we contacted them, and do they know what this Agenda item is doing?
Have we contacted SCS?
Yes.
I'm not sure if we have.
Well, I mean, I don't mind what we're doing. I think what we're doing is correct, but I still think SCS Engineers and the environmental services that they provide should be consulted with the potential use or the potential removal of a use from that particular zone. Whoa, I got the money man coming up. What am I missing?
Let me try to help with that. So the Item Eight has to do with a consulting contract to do assessment work in the district. It's for a variety of properties. The two aren't necessarily related. The property that's, that is the retail fueling station in Pioneer Bluff now will be part of that work, but it's not, it's not related to the zoning change at all. The SCS contract is with the city to do assessment work in Pioneer Bluff, so I don't know if that helps.
I guess, my point I'm trying to make, probably not doing a good job of it, but my point is, is here we hire these consultants to give us good information, talk to us about what's going on in the Pioneer Bluffs, and yet, at the same time, we sort of tie their hands by taking an operation away or a business away that could potentially want to use it.
Well, the fueling station that is in Pioneer Bluff currently will be allowed to stay. It will become a legally non-conforming use, and it can stay in perpetuity as long as it remains in operation. So that, the status quo in terms of that will remain the same.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Joe Hansen?
Yeah, what is a, what is a fueling station?
It's a commercial station for the sale of fuels, gasoline. There's also, at the Remus Facility, a small hydrogen fuel cell facility which falls under that category as well.
Would charging stations fall into that category?
Charging stations, we view differently. They're usually, we envision them, especially in the urban district of the Pioneer Bluff and Bridge District, as being approved along with development. So if you get a office building, for instance, there could be a handful of fueling, of charging stations approved with that facility, and so we look at them differently.
All right, so, so this is basically going to be a, stop being permitted use, and so the existing facility there is going to be grandfathered in as a non-conforming-
Yes.
-use in perpetuity. That assumes they're not going to expand or change, right?
Exactly.
So if they get a second hydrogen pump, what happens?
They would not be allowed to expand it from the size that it is today. So what they have today in terms of size is what they would be restricted to.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mayor Protemla Desma?
Aye. Councilmember Johansson asked a question I was after, and, and understand, there's one, there's multiple fueling stations, but it include, so based on your definition, the larger commercial ones, which are basically filling the tanker trucks that are, is that considered part of the fueling station, or we just, is it just the actual retail?
It's just retail.
The retail fuel station?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. We're going to open the public hearing on this, on Item Thirteen. I'm going to request to speak, but it's a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on this item? All right, then, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, just a comment on it. I think, I think this is, needs to be a little bit, I think we need to carve out hydrogen out of this, just because, you know, we're trying, we've got the only station in the region now. Toyota's coming out with their hydrogen car this month. We're going to start seeing more of these come on the road, and it's difficult to get these hydrogen stations in throughout the region, and we've got one already. So now an additional hydrogen pump there, I think would be a natural. So, I mean, I would like to see a carve-out. The other issue is if, the mayor talked a little bit about kind of the other technologies on streetcar, there is a potential, I would think, in a place that already is hydrogen fueling, to be a fueling station for hydrogen-powered streetcars as well, or fuel cell streetcars. So, I mean, I would like to see maybe a carve-out in this, specifically for that technology, maybe not petroleum, and that's one of the reasons I was asking about fuel, is, is it butanes, propane, is it LNG, or, you know, to maybe kind of look at what our plan is in terms of cleaning up the environment and having zero emission vehicles to help support that in this area.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting conundrum, too, and I'm definitely open to, well, there's, there's at least two ways of approaching this, maybe, and they're not incompatible with each other. One is, is the type of fuel, which is, I agree with all the comments that you made, this was originally motivated by, we don't want to have a waterfront zone that has a bunch of gas stations in it, which is partly about air quality and all of that, but also just, okay, what's the right, what's the right land use mix there? And we want, we want activity spaces, you know, restaurants and stuff, we want, we want to create a walking environment, and people don't walk, you know, the research folks tend not to walk if there's a parking lot or a gas station or something similar. So that's without respect to the, to the fuel type. On the other hand, there's this, there's just this location, which is, if it's going, if in three years from now, this, this location says, you know what, we want to swap out all of our petroleum, now we're going to be just hydrogen. That, I think that counts as an improvement, and, and that shouldn't, which would not be allowed, right, under the non-conforming-
That's correct.
-use provisions. And so, you know, maybe thinking about, is there something about this, you know, this existing gas station that would give it the flexibility to be, you know, to adapt to, to still be at that gas station in the district, but to be able to adapt to changing technologies and fuel types over time? I don't know how to do that in a zoning code revision, but I'm trying to get at the issue that you're reading, because I think it's right on target.
I would agree, and I think Councilmember Johansson brings up a valid point with looking at those hydrogen fuel stations, and because it isn't, we're also planning a transition in the Pioneer Bluffs, thinking 10, 20 years ahead, and we want to make sure they maintain some flexibility for that. So, again, I'm not the planning expert as you guys are, but I think that's, I would agree with, and be open to some feedback on it.
Well, we could, I believe, accomplish what you wanted, probably by changing the definition of what a fueling station actually is. If, if that's your wish, we can certainly work on that and come back to you with this in a different format.
Mr. Johansson?
I mean, can't you just add, just to be for the city attorney, that fueling stations are defined as such except for hydrogen? So that's specific.
Yes, we, that would involve a change of the definition of fueling station, which is in the zoning code, but we could certainly change that definition to exclude hydrogen. There's any number of possibilities. You could have a definition that is specific for hydrogen or electric, for that matter. I believe, right now, the definition is very broad, as Kathy indicated, and it was intended to cover all different forms of fuel, but it could be narrowed.
And we don't, there could be other forms of fuel, we're not thinking of, but you, so you could define it in an inclusive way, right? Could, it could be petroleum, or it could be, you know, fueling that generates, you know, carbon emissions or something. I mean, they're, I mean, in any event, we can't, we can't deal with it tonight, because the first, the first reading's going to need to match the second reading. So it sounds like there's enough interest in finding the right resolution, but not writing it necessarily here, you know, at the council. So if we continue this item to a future, to a future date?
It does seem to me, too, would need, I think, because we're suggesting some substantive changes, I would suggest to go back, probably back through Planning Commission, because, you know, they could take a look at the conditions, conditional use permitting, and the, I think they're going, going to have to look at the other things related to the fueling definition and the zoning ordinance, I'm guessing.
Yes, that would be the typical process, if you make a substantive change-
Right.
-that the Planning Commission did not consider, you would take it back there first.
We don't have an application at the desk right now, right, for, for a new gas station?
No.
Right, so I, so we can, we have the time to be deliberate and thoughtful about it, so.
Okay. So then we would continue that to a future date?
Yep.
With potential referral to the Planning Commission as appropriate?
Kathy, one question I would have is, we have SCS Engineers, which is environmental consen, consolidations, or consultations, and we also have the OPR and Varco LLP, which is legal consultants, that we approved in Agenda Item Number Eight. Should those companies be contacted to maybe walk, or help go through the minefield that we're trying to do?
I'll, I'll work with our Economic Development-
Okay.
-Department that has dealt with, with them and come up with a game plan.
Okay. All right, okay. Thank you.
All right, all right, then, without objection, so we continue to a future meeting, with appropriate referrals to the Planning Commission as necessary. All right, that brings us to Item Fourteen, which is a workshop on the proposed city charter concept. Mr. Robinson?
Evening. At your meeting of July 15th, the council voted to begin studying the possibility of preparing a city charter for presenter, presentation to the voters at a future election. This workshop is the first step in that process. I'd like to briefly provide some background on municipal charters in general, and then some ideas to set the stage for the council's discussion. California Constitution provides that cities can adopt a charter which governs the city's actions within a range of local activities referred to as municipal affairs, which are generally matters specific to an individual jurisdiction as opposed to matters of statewide concern. The state constitution does not define municipal affairs, but legislation and case law have clarified the general meaning of the term. Attachment One to your staff report is a table that summarizes a variety of topics that can, but don't necessarily need to be included in a city charter. I'd like to point out, we've added some additional information to Attachment One that was not included in the initial staff report. Pages four through six of Attachment One include descriptions of several additional topical areas that can be covered by charters, including contracts, prevailing wages, and public utilities. Complete copies of the staff report and attachments have been left for council members at the dais and are also available for the audience on the little table at the side of the chambers. Approximately 25% of California cities have charters. A charter can be drafted by a city council, but it can only be adopted or amended with a vote of the people. There are statutory deadlines associated with the adoption of a charter. Attachment Two to your report is a schedule that summarizes the deadlines that would be relevant if the city council wished to place a proposed charter on the November 2016 ballot. I'd like to conclude my presentation with some ideas that are relevant as the council begins its discussion of the charter concept. First, adopting a charter in itself does not automatically grant the city any particular suite of powers. The charter only grants those powers that the city claims in the charter document itself. So a charter is a very customizable document that's responsive to the needs and wants of a community, and is not a one-size-fits-all document. So we're anticipating a month-long process with you to work on provisions that might be of interest for you to include. Along those same lines, many charter documents specifically exclude provisions in certain topical areas that the council may want to, may not want to have charter authority over. So it's possible to write into the charter that the city will defer to general law in those matters that it doesn't wish to control with its charter. And then, finally, in the, in the staff report, you'll notice that there's not a lot of detailed analysis of the various charter provisions, and that, that was by design, because there's a long list of potential items for you to consider including in the charter. So as you begin refining that list, we'll come back in future workshops with more detailed analysis of the various provisions that are specifically of interest to you. So we're looking for direction tonight on both the content of a prospective charter and on the process that you'd like to use to arrive on that content, and that's the end of my presentation. I'm here to help answer questions, and the city attorney as well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you for the workshop.
All right, questions for Mr. Robinson or Ms. Mitchell at this time?
Yeah, I do. John, when in this whole process are we going to have the opportunity to talk about project labor agreements, or prevailing wage, and strong mayor issues, city manager form of government? When in this process do we have time to, or when we are going to talk about those? And are those, or are there ways of tweaking those kinds of issues, so that it is part of the charter, provided it passes?
Well, I think part of the, part of the guidance that we're looking for from you tonight and in future meetings is actually the structure of the process that you'd like to use to deliberate through those issues. But those, all those issues that you mentioned are ones that would be up for discussion as part of this process.
Okay. I guess the, the biggest question that I have, and that I've been asked, is, why do we want to do this? That's the, that's the biggest question. I think that the city of West Sacramento is run very well. I think it has been run very well. I'm very proud of the way our city has evolved and developed. I don't know of any major issues out there that a general law city can't handle. And so, the question people are asking me is, why? And I really struggle with trying to figure out a, an answer for them. What are the major issues that a charter will address versus a general law city?
I think, I think the question you're asking is exactly the right one. I think that's probably one that the council itself will get the opportunity to deliberate on. Generically, you know, a lot of cities, you know, point to the idea of having local control over the issues that charters are allowed to govern as, as an advantage of a charter. But in terms of a specific one that might be, you know, desirable here, I, that would leave that to the council to talk about.
So, are there ways of, let's just take strong city manager form of government? Are there ways to put in the charter that we will continue to have a strong city manager form of government?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can exclude, you can make affirmative statements as to what you want to continue doing pursuant to general law, and you can also make affirmative statements about what you wish to pursue with a, with a charter.
Okay. All right, well, listen.
Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you. All right, we have a few requests to speak on this, and the first is by Carlos Acaro.
I apologize to all of you for coming up here prematurely previously. But one of the problems that has arisen, that I think is, was highlighted by what occurred in Sacramento. Recently, Sacramento built the Kings Arena, and it was a big item all over this region. The problem that arises from having a charter city is that, one of the things that occurred is that the voters did not get to vote on whether or not to spend $255 million contributing to the Kings Arena. It was widely believed that it would fail again if the voters had a right to vote on it, if they had a right to go thumbs up or thumbs down on the arena, regardless of how you feel about it. I'm a sports fan, but I'm also a fan of voting. Now, what happened is that there were three cases that went into the court system. One of the cases had to do with the, the, the whole issue of whether or not voters should be allowed to vote, on whether to approve giving away or investing $255 million in that arena. The court decided that because Sacramento had adopted a city charter in 1850, the voters surrendered their right to go thumbs up or thumbs down on the Kings Arena. Hence, some people refer to it as a power grab, that maybe that sort of right, whether you go thumbs up or thumbs down on that large of a contribution of taxpayer funds, maybe that should remain with the voters. Maybe that's the sort of reason that we have, the democratic system we have in the general laws. When you eliminate the general laws, which you do, by the way, I disagree with some of what was said, the charter, going charter relieves, is designed to relieve a city of, of a lot of the general laws. And that is one of the problems. When you relieve a city of those general laws, cities like Bell, that don't have 200 people or 100 people, or a hidden industrial park, they have 32,000 people, and they raised their wage and pensions to 1.4 million. They took, they raised salaries to outrageous sums that would never have been allowed under general law. All of that without voter approval. It's the same problem. The voters didn't get to vote any of that, and that's the vote, and that's the problem that's coming to West Sacramento with this whole notion of a charter city, and that's why I'm opposed to it. But thank you very much for your courtesy.
Thank you. Pat Flint.
I believe the charter city is too risky. You've done a wonderful job with our budgets throughout the years. I'll give you all the credit for that. We've not had to cut back as much as other cities have. Now, getting to the reasons why we shouldn't have a charter city. The cities don't save any money by becoming charter cities. It could invite corruption, such as in Bell. It could cause bankruptcies, such as Stockton and San Bernardino. It allows politicians to write their own rules, laws, and regulations, which sometimes I don't like. More costly elections could occur, and we're already paying dearly for our elections in this town. Politicians could raise taxes with or without voter approval. They could raise their own salaries, which, you know, you don't get paid that much money for sitting up there and taking all this abuse, but it could get out of hand. You may not have a balanced budget, something that you should be proud of already doing. And, and I guess, if it's not broken, why change it? Sure, there are things I don't like that you do, or that is happening throughout the city. But as a whole, this is a good city to raise families in. We're on our third generation here in West Sacramento. My children don't seem to want to move away. I do, however, they don't, so I won't leave. So, you'll see my face around here a little bit more. But, you know, I, I want transparency within the city. That's the biggest frustration I have with you guys up there. And if you don't believe this charter is going to help John Q. Public, or benefit us in ways that are going to be really outstanding, that stand out in our minds and in, in our households, don't vote for it. And I'm asking you, if you know the majority is going to vote for it, and you don't believe in it, please say no. I'd like to know once in a while where you stand on issues. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mariana Rivera.
My name's Mariana Rivera, and tonight I have real sad news that, that the leader of our organization, LULAC, passed yesterday afternoon. That's Cheryl Castarina. And although we're in shock and grieving, we felt the need to be present today to show her opposition to this movement to a charter city. It was what she believed in, and we want to honor her. And we wanted to ask you to honor her with a moment of silence.
Thank you. Can I go next to Yvette Cassia Sarkos, but let me also say, just on behalf, I know I'm speaking on behalf of the whole council, who shares in the, in the grief and in the admiration for the contribution to the community that Cheryl has made over many, 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 many years in so many different ways. Most recently with the, with the, with bike park and the, and the Coboom Playground, and in, in, in a variety of ways, in government, in the, in community organizations, in the neighborhood. She's been a real leader in, in West Sacramento, and she'll be missed.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Cassia Sarkos, and I am the LULAC treasure. I stand before you on this agenda item in loving memory of our LULAC president, Cheryl Cheryl was a champion for many issues in West Sacramento, and was tirelessly committed to pursuing equality for her community of Broderick. We both share this passion, and she was my inspiration. So, on behalf of my always-smiling friend, I asked the one question she was very prepared to ask you all tonight. Why do you feel the need to change our city from a general law city to a charter city? I talked to Cheryl the morning she passed away. That was her question. Together, the city council and the electorate, both, we have made improvements to the quality of our city. Why do you want to have supreme authority? Through a charter that more than likely will be made up and adopted of the council's And the final question I ha, I have is why? Why omit the word supreme in Attachment 1 of your report? When the League of California Cities General Law versus Charter City Table, which was attached to Agenda Item 26E of the July 15th Report to the council, clearly stated in the first characteristic listed under Charter City, that it has supreme authority over municipal affairs. Again, again, I ask you, why do you want supreme authority? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll return to the council. Those are all the public comments. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had the opportunity to work with Cheryl in the Neighborhood Court, a great person, really a shock, and glad to see so many of her supporters here tonight, and thanks for coming out, even after such a blatant news of this. Really appreciate it. In terms of this, this whole process, I think, I think we're all aware that we need to be able to explain why, why we're doing this. Not only why amongst ourselves, but why to the public, and have public dialogue to make sure this is a totally transparent process. In the end, it's got to be voted on next November, and there's going to be a campaign, there's going to be information. So, between now and, and next year, those are going to have to be the questions that are going to be asked. And as we start rolling out the process and kind of filling in the gaps of what this is, I'm sure we'll address the things like prevailing wage and, and some of the other issues that are of concern to people. But, you know, I, some of the concerns I would have, just, you know, the, the thing with charter, charter language is, is it's, it's still subject to litigation, there's still standards that the, that the courts use in determining what is controlled by the state, what is state necessity, and then what can be delegated down to the city. So, we'll just have to navigate that in terms of the provisions to make sure we're not necessarily exposed to litigation. And, you know, in terms of, of the process, I mean, I, I, I know that West Sacramento is doing really well. I think, you know, people in West Sacramento know that the city's doing really, really well, and the region knows West Sacramento is doing really well. But I'm looking for ways to maybe take it to the next level, and this may be an opportunity to do that. So, I'll be looking at, you know, kind of, if it's not fixed, if it's not broken, why fix it? But also, what can we do to, you know, really kind of take a step forward with this that's, that benefits the community, that provides more effective and efficient services, and then still meets our goals of providing good middle-class, middle-wage jobs, and some of, and, you know, the bicycle pass and all the other amenities, and the greening that we've been trying to do in West Sacramento, to make sure that we can preserve all that? Because we do kind of know what West Sacramento is about, and I don't think the charter is going to change that. You know, but there are some things we need to watch out as we go through this, and I know there's going to be plenty of open discussion, and particularly as this starts, starts rolling out.
I agree. I mean, the, the supreme language is, is interesting, and it is important, but it's, the language is actually, I mean, it's derived from the constitutional provisions around charter cities. And it is, was an attempt in the constitution for the, when the constitution was adopted for California, to say that charter cities are supreme in relationship to the state government. It's not in relationship to the people. The, what the Supreme Court has said about charters is that charters don't grant cities any power. Charters are a limitation on the exercise of that power by, by their public officials. The supreme, the unfettered supreme power is automatically vested in the city as a municipal entity, but the charter provides the tools by which the voters can control that. As an example, I, I could vote in a week from now to raise my salary. It's authorized under a general law already. But a charter could say, no, the city council does not have any authority to raise its salaries. That's, that's a perfectly legitimate provision of a charter. In fact, many city charters, including the one across the river, have such a provision. So, in that case, the people of Sacramento have said, no, we, we want to be more controlling of our, the ability of our elected officials to set their own salaries than the state law allows. Charter can't accomplish that. When we issued $40 million of bonds to build our equivalent of the arena, $40 million is actually a larger share of our budget than $255 million is of Sacramento, we were not required to have a public vote of, of any kind. I mean, we're a general law city. There's nothing in general law that requires you to, to achieve a vote of the people for an expenditure, no matter what the size is. General law is not a, it is not a cure-all for, for democracy in, in any form. Now, had we done it, we wouldn't have Riley Field today, because Riley Field was only possible because we were the only place that could build a ballpark from start to finish in 14 months. It was, it was only possible because of that. But the general law would, did not, did not require any, any form of public referendum on that, that process. A balanced budget. We're, we're subject to balanced budget rules already, but the city charter could be more specific about what that really means and what it doesn't mean, and how you count, how you account for debt and for other obligations in the future, to assure the kind of fiscal responsibility that this community has insisted on from the date that we incorporated. So, really, the charter is a vehicle by which the people of the community can, can control the, the exercise of power in their government, both vis-à-vis the city, the city council and the city staff itself, but also, and importantly, vis-à-vis the state. Because the state has been a less-than-stellar partner, and the legislature has changed the rules and taken our property and our funds repeatedly, and a charter is minimal protection, given that the state has, has eroded what charters can, what charters can do over the last century. But it is still better protection than, than we have had. And we have already been at the vanguard of these kinds of issues in the past. The voters of West Sacramento were the first ones in Yolo County to impose a, a special sales tax to support now streetcar and flood, but also roads and library, and the waterfront park, and the fire, Washington Firehouse, and Broderick, and the full range of improvements. We were the first one to do that. And we, and we came up with the idea before the state would allow it. Before the state would allow community improvement to districts, we adopted the, our, the voters here said, no, we want to, we want to be innovative in our financing, and we want you to, post redevelopment, to adopt through Measure G, a different way of doing infrastructure projects and financing into the future. But the state law didn't really allow for that to happen at, at, you know, at that time. They've caught up to us, but state law did not permit that to happen. And without that, we wouldn't have been able to build many of the projects that have made West Sacramento as livable as it is today, and certainly into the future. So, we are, we are already acting in this way in some significant ways. I'm often asked, why, and why aren't you guys in the, at the leadership on the minimum wage movement, for example, in the region? Well, we don't have the same legal authorities as Sacramento and others do to be leaders on issues that sometimes our constituents are interested in having this, this city be a part of. be a part of. And it's because we don't have authority that the legislature has, has preempted us on it. So the, the charter is really around the, the public of this community being able to define the, the rules of the game in ways that both make, make sure that the government is, is continually accountable to the people, but also that we have sufficient independence from the state, from state government, which has proven to be much more of a harm than a help to the advancement of our community. But I think importantly, at least for me, the major driver of, of, of this work today is, and it gets to what Mr. Johansson said, is that West Sacramento has never been a city that sits still and says, oh, you know what? We've done it. We've achieved everything we want to achieve. We have been constantly reinventing and trying and innovating and creating, even when we've had successes. We've said, okay, we could, but we could still, there's still much more to do in our community. There's still neighborhoods that need help. There's still inequalities that need to be resolved. There's still opportunities for public, great public places to be created. There's things we need to do for our young people and there's things we need to do for aging. We, we want to make life better in our community and having a charter that is essentially, the contours of it were created a century ago, I mean, the, the existing general law structure don't often allow us to do that. And so for me, a significant portion, part of this, of this work is around how we can, how we can create a true, modern, innovative structure that allows us to do what we have been doing, but better, to achieve a more perfect union, if, as the president would say, here in the city, to take advantage of technology, which right now is not recognized at all. Under the general laws of, and most of our, our procedures, the only ways that people ever communicate with one another are by newspaper ads and the mail. And those are not, you know, those are not pointless ways of communicating, but they're not the predominant, they are not the, the exclusive ways of communication that they were a century ago when this was all, when the system was created. But we have no way to create the kind of protections around the new communications and technologies that would make for broader ranges of civic engagement, for citizen co-creation and value that are occurring in, in cities and other states. And so I think the potential for us to, 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 to discover and create and innovate in that space is enormous. And also to be much more competitive with other cities and other places. One of the reasons why IKEA is here, certainly the reason that Riley Field is here, but also many, many other projects and employers, is that we have, we've been a place where you could, you, if you came, if you're IKEA and you come here, you can apply for a permit, you can say you want to build and 24 months later, you're open and making, and, you know, making, making a living. In many other places, that's not possible. But others are catching up to us. You know, the, the other communities are not blind. They see, Davis sees what we've done. Sacramento sees what we've done. Roseville sees what we've done. And they are trying to implement the same kind of procedures. We have to keep innovating to create the kind of place that businesses, large and small, that community groups, large and small, have the space to innovate and to create and to invest and to, and to put their, you know, their, their, their life savings on the line to make something happen, to open that restaurant. How do we make it possible, the, the most possible for that to happen? So looking at the ways that we have, the processes that we've, that we have, the zoning code that we have and the restrictions that that imposes, are there other ways that we could think about this over the next several months that would, that would allow us to create some additional and some additional value? The other is, I'm very proud of our finance and budget policies and practices and that's been going for, you know, for many, many, many years, but, but there, there's no thanks to the general law of California. I mean, those, those have become, those are because they've been strong parts of the culture of the council and the city manager and the community has been very supportive of, of being, you know, fiscally prudent with the way that those resources are spent. But let's be honest, you know, Mr. Kristoff will not be on the council forever. I will not be mayor forever. We, we might, we might be gone a year from now. We, we, we need, we need a city organization and governance structure, and governance structure and policies and, and what have you, that transcend any individuals, that are about taking what we've learned through the great success of West Sacramento over the last decade and a half or two, two and a half decades and make, and bake them into our DNA and, and not have our success solely determined by, by key individuals in various places around the community, but really part of who we are and how we operate and how we hold ourselves accountable and kind of metrics that we use to convey that to the public. So there's a lot of us, a lot for us to consider. I've said before and I, and as we get into this discussion, there are definitely parts of the grid that, that Mr. Robinson's prepared that I think have some real potential and some that I would, you know, if it were up to me, well, it's at least one-fifth up to me, I would say, let's cross them off right now and not spend our time on them because they don't belong, for reasons that we've talked about before. So for, as an example, the form of government box, the city manager, strong mayor or other intermediate forms, I don't, for a reason we've, we've talked about previously, I don't think that's a useful conversation for us to be having. That's not an area where there's lots of opportunities for great innovation. And so I, I, I think it would be useful for us to take issues, a couple of issues like that off the table. Prevailing wage is the same thing. We, we're, this council, the city has been strongly supportive of prevailing wage from day one. So there's no, we don't need a separate set of rules about prevailing wage. That doesn't fit into the, how do we be innovative? How do we be fiscally responsible? How do we streamline our processes, processes kind of, of opportunity? So let, we, we can take that off the table from the beginning and say that if we, if we agree on a charter at the end, that that charter will include language that says, we will follow the state's general law with prevailing wage. So another example of, of an area where I, where I think it's not, we can, we could make a decision right now to simply not move forward in that, in that domain. But others, there's plenty of others on here that are worth probing. The, you know, some of them that sound boring, like as procedures for enacting local ordinances or permitting resolutions, I think this is an area where there's real opportunity for modernization. Franchising of utilities. One of the number one complaints that we receive in this city is, can't you do something about cable and internet service and broadband access throughout the city and broadband quality and broadband competitiveness? We have fewer powers. General law cities have virtually no powers essentially over cable and internet franchises and within their city limits. And charter cities have certainly not lots of powers, but have more powers, more leverage over franchisees like we used to and before, before some of the federal changes. So a charter would give us some additional leverage to meet the, the, the often expressed interest of our constituents and our, and our local companies and employers in having a better, you know, better environment for, for broadly accessible internet and broadband and cable services. So I, I think that, you know, there's, there's areas of, of that nature where there, where we've got some, some real opportunities to make some, some changes without spending a lot of time on issues that at least from my perspective, we don't need to and that just, you know, get people upset for no reason whatsoever. You know, if we're not going to, if we're not going to be talking, if we're, if we're, none of us are going to vote for a strong mayor system, including me, ever, then there's no reason to get people upset about it. If none of, if we're not going to vote for a prevailing wage change, there's no reason to put it on the table and talk about it for six months. We can make some decisions right now to narrow the scope, to eliminate a couple of, of items of that nature and really focus on where the opportunities are to be best in class and to be innovative and to be responsible and to help make sure that our city is in the best position possible to meet the needs of, of our residents in, long into the future. Ms. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been being asked why and I've heard if it ain't broken, why fix it? And so I'm taking that really to heart. I think if we contemplate moving forward, I, I do think we need to ask and answer that. And, and I, I'm really interested in learning why, for example, Folsom, there, I think the, the other city in the region that most recently went to become a charter city. So I'd like to understand kind of what, why they did that, learn a little bit more about, about that and look at, you know, Sacramento, Roseville, Folsom, but understand a little bit more about that, that kind of decision. I, I really am also interested in the process and I know, Mr. Robinson, you brought up the process to us and gave us kind of an outline. I do want to have deep, be able to have deep discussions about, about the issues that are important to us and as you, as you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, what we, what we just take off the table right away. For me, the most compelling, if I'm looking at this list that we were given, the zoning, having served for 10 years on the planning commission, I think we could be much more creative in terms of, of how we as a city deal with some of our zoning matters and also, as you mentioned, the public utilities and franchises. I, I think those, those things where we probably could be doing some, we have an amazing staff here, we have amazingly engaged citizens, we could be doing some creative things and, and continue to lead. So I, I, I think we, we have to figure out this process for gathering input, deciding what would be in and out of the charter, a charter and, and how we have open, open dialogue.
May I put them to the desk?
Thank you. And this has been a, similar to all of you, been, this, this topic has been, I've been getting several questions on, especially yesterday making the rounds to a couple of the, the Neighborhood National Night Out parties and it's been coming up so, and rightly so. And, and I'm sorry, before I get too long, I just want to send my condolences and to all of you and, and, and our loss, our community's loss and deeply appreciate you coming out tonight and still, whether you're opposed or supportive of this, this issue, it's surely representative of our community that you're, you're here. So thank you. And I, I did work with her as well early on in the Bright Park discussions a year ago. So I was moved and saddened by her lot, her words of her loss tonight. So my condolences to all of you. But on this issue, you know, I, and, you know, as somebody who came into office in 2010 and one of the first agenda items that hit us in, in 2011 was the loss of redevelopment and quickly learning where our city stood and what we had to gain and lose more likely is what occurred. You quickly understand what limits you have as a city. We are a general law city here and, and with the state and what they can impose, what you can do, what you can't do. And, you know, I go back and think about the things of my, my 10 years prior to that and the planning commission and all the work that's been done prior to that to get our city to where we are. I think I'm in agreement with my colleagues and I'm, I, I am one to think we have to be, we have to remain on the innovation, innovative edge of kind of understanding what we can, what, what we can do to take our city to the next level on, on a number of fronts. And my colleagues have listed quite a few. I was going to bring up the zoning one as well because I think we all learned as we cut our teeth at the planning commission, what, what those limits are. And I certainly understand the question of why and why, why are we doing this? If it's not broke, why fix it? I get that. But we also can't be afraid of why not. And we, I can't, we have to take on, I'm, I'm totally, look, I'm going to be skeptical as well. This fun, this, this city is, is running well. I'm going to be as big a skeptic on if this can help us or not, asking ourselves and our staff that does, that brings us to the table, tough questions and challenging ourselves. That's what this process should do. We should be challenged ourselves, looking forward and our status quo. And we can't be afraid to do that. If we want to be a city that continues to thrive for everyone in this communicate, in this community and every one and every person that isn't born yet in this community, every person that is coming to this community to live, we have to be forward-thinking. And I'm going, I want to give this that, that look. We, we owe it to not just all of you, we owe it to those generations that will be here next. And that's what the city, I've learned the city is all about. What's next? What are we going to do to kind of further ourselves? And I, I, I am thinking of as many things you guys have brought up already that I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, you brought it right away, elimination of the strong mayor is off the table. I think you're a terrific mayor, but I certainly don't want to cede that power to any one person at this point. It's not something that I'm willing to have a conversation about. So if it's off the table or off the bat, I think that's, that, that, I think that's something I'm, I'm fine with. Your comments on prevailing wage, we have learned to, to succeed, given those sets of laws and, and that are provided to us by the state, I've seen no reason to change that today. So I think those kind of principles that we are, that you've sort of articulated, that we are all, I think in agreement are, there are things that simply don't, we, we don't do here, that we can take off the table and then get to a real discussion about what we want our community to look like and where can it take, be advantageous to maybe create opportunities for our community through a charter city where we are able to advance ourselves. So, and I say ourselves, I meant the community, which this should come first. This isn't about myself or, as the mayor said, it's about him because we may not be here in the next, after the next, each of our respective election cycles. And we all, as you all know, we're, all of us are, you know, we, we have other lives and, and, and we have families and everything. You, this is a privilege to serve, but we are serving you and we're very, I think I am, very aware of that privilege. And so that we do this for the community first and it has to benefit the city. It has to, to me, the principle behind this is how do we move? Can it, can it, and can we get agreement that it can move the city forward? And so far, by eliminating things we know that won't, that won't tie us, tie us up in a non-ending argument that none of us will win, I think is a good start. Just taking those things off the table is a good start. I do agree with Mr. Johansson as well. If we're going to move forward on the, on a process, we, one of the principles has to be transparency, that we should have good dialogue with folks. They need to understand what it is we're thinking, what it is we ultimately may or may not adopt and why. I think we owe it to the community and this is, this is a writing of our constitution and they deserve to understand that. So again, I'm, I'm supportive of, of kind of moving forward and defining this process. And, and as I've started to outline, we can agree upon some basic principles, how we move forward on it. I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of kind of taking a look at this and seeing if it indeed can move our city forward, if it can get to, if we can get to a point saying, why, why not? This is, this, this could really help our city in a year or two or five or 10. And that's what I'm interested in. So, thank you.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can, I mean, I'm not afraid to at least take a look. I'm skeptical, but I'm certainly not afraid to take a look. I mean, I think one of the things that we need to stress and that is a strong city manager form of government. Prevailing wage issues, I think that prevailing wage has served us well. Even project labor agreements, it's a very controversial issue, but at the same time, I think that project labor agreements really spell out good quality of work. We've all discussed the strong mayor issue and it's really not anything that anybody's interested in. I think if there are ways that we can put into a charter, there will be a vote required if a certain amount of money is going to be spent on any project. We need to figure out what that is. So, but I mean, I think that maybe there's some things that we can do there. I think limiting tax authority is probably something we should explore. I, I think that if a charter just willy-nilly raises taxes, I just don't think that that's good. So, but anyway, there must be some way in which that can be written up so that the community embraces it and understands it or maybe a vote of the community needs to happen, that sort of thing. But, so it'll be interesting to see how we move through this whole process and, and make sure that we can raise the comfort level of the community at large so that they, there is a level of trust that is there. We've, I think from a financial perspective, when we did Measure A and B and we've done some other things, we've had a reporting that goes back to the community and is put in the newspaper every year on what monies are being spent from those particular funds, I think has really raised the comfort level of the community. And there's a level of trust that has come back as far as the council is concerned. And I think that that's a good thing and how you put that into a charter or something, I don't have a clue. But I mean, I'm, I'm sure there are people that will be working on this that might have some ideas and some concepts that they can bring to the council and bring to the community that we can debate and then say yes or no. So, anyway, but those are just some are just some of my initial thoughts. And I just hope they, that people understand them and, and at least take a, and listen to what I've said, so that we can start the dialogue as far as something like this is concerned. And I hope early on, we can find out if, gee whiz, wait a minute, you know, we're spending a lot of time on all these different issues. And I'm hoping that we can find out early on that, is it worth it? Maybe we don't need to, I mean, maybe we can get halfway through this thing and say, you know, you guys have done pretty well as far as a, a general law city is concerned. It's taking way too much time, too much energy. There's too much consternation going on. Just dump it. But, you know, we'll wait and see. We'll take a look. We'll see what happens. I mean, I think the mayor makes some very, very good points. And if there is a way to enhance our community without going through the upheavals and those kinds of things, then I'm, I think that, you know, let's take a peek, take a look.
Actually, I've, I've had a total of 18 communications about this topic from, from the public side. There's no, there hasn't been a groundswell yet. And understandably so, because there's nothing yet there. Right? So, and of those 18, I wrote it down in my other book, but I think there were five in opposition, three liked the concept, and all the rest were, what is this again?
Yeah, what is this?
And, you know, could you explain more about what, what this charter is? And the answer is, we don't know. Because our, and it's not, this is not being created somewhere else, or it hasn't already been created, and we're going to unveil it next week, or we can share it in a private meeting with somebody? Because that's not the, this is a process of, of creation by the council and everyone in the, in the community. And so, and it's not a staff product, right? So the, I mean, we can't ask staff, because we're the ones that told them we were initiating this, this, this process to try to, to try to figure it out. So as we, as, and as we go through it, we will realize, are we creating something that is worth the effort or not? So I think it's, it's, it's an excellent point. With respect to, I mean, the, I think one of our challenges is the scope is so potentially large. It's too large for us to be talking about simply, you know, to have a session every, every meeting or every other meeting, that's just the entire thing all at once, with no learning happening, just discussion. I wanted to suggest a kind of a path forward for the, for the, for the immediate future in terms of a process. One was to cross off at least those two, those two issues that have, keep popping up despite our whack-a-mole-ing of the, of the form of government and the prevailing wage, that, that we would, that we would simply, you know, aside from the outset, the city manager form of government and the state procedures, policies and procedures with respect to prevailing wage would remain, we're not, we're not, we don't need to spend any time investigating those. So we take those off the table. Second, that we, that we have ad hocks within the council to focus on some specific areas for the purpose of, of idea generation, fleshing out ideas, doing additional research, and then bringing back to the full council, you know, kind of a framework for discussion that could then, you know, proceed into further work, so that each member of the council would take some, some topic areas to, to, to do that leadership work on. Not, again, not to come up with a, with, you know, not to write charter language, but to, but to, to look at what best practices, look what others are doing, look at some ideas, flesh them out, hold some community workshops if you want to, but to put the purpose of coming back to the council with some more baked bound, you know, some options and some frameworks and some ideas that we could then focus on perhaps one session at a time. And, you know, we've heard, you know, Ms. Andy talk about, you know, planning and zoning and that streamlining and the mission and scope of the charter as, as an example. And he hasn't talked about it, but the, the finance and budget piece that Mr. Lettis has already been leading on, in part through the redevelopment work, but also the elections piece, which we have not talked about tonight, the district elections component, which we do, we, we, this is an opportunity for us to, to examine our status under the California Voting Rights Act, but so, issues related to elections. Mr. Johansson's been a, a strong advocate and doing a lot of leading work on technology and innovation. And both as those relate to civic engagement, but also more broadly in, in the city. And so looking for, to scope out some opportunities for, in those domains. And Mr. Kristoff has just talked about, you know, the taxation and revenue, our, our personnel and officers. And, and we haven't really talked about public, public safety. It's on our, it's on our, it's on our management agenda for this year, but the, you know, one of the issues that charters have dealt with have been around public safety and review commissions and that sort of thing. And that seems an appropriate space there. So I wonder if, I guess what I propose is if we, one, take those two items off the, off the discussion list, city manager form of government and prevailing wage. Two-
Strong mayor.
Huh?
I'd take strong mayor, too.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. So we're, we're, the charter, the draft charter, whenever we're at the draft point, which will be month, minimum, which will be months from now, will include a strong, that's not really the right term, but not, a city manager form of government, not a strong mayor form of government. And it will include the, the reference to prevailing wage. Everything else will be covered through these ad hocks that, that, you know, I would, I would commit myself to work with individual members of the council on these specific pieces without it coming together until, until council session. And then that we do a, a session, you know, some, some additional learning sessions, more generally, on topics like what Ms. Andy raised with respect to, what could we learn from Folsom's experience and, and the provisions that they put in, since they were the only one to have done a charter that isn't from 50 years or 100 years, or as Mr. Alcalá said, you know, 100 and plus years ago. So, you know, sessions like that, so council members have ideas, you know, for, for broader learning sessions that we might do as part of, you know, maybe if we devote an item on each, each month over the next several months, where we either get reports back from the, from these ad hocks and/or more general learning, as has been described by, by, by a couple of members of the council, that, that would allow us to make, make some deliberative process without rushing, without rushing to judgment on anything, but really starting to, at least at the beginning, essentially it being an ideation, brainstorming and learning phase. And that will allow us then to figure out, okay, where, where are there real opportunities here? And if so, what are the ones that we want to focus on over the, over the following months? And what's our strategy for engagement? The other thing I would say about the engagement process is, is I'm hoping to sit down, spend, sit down with Mr. Johansson and Mr. Robinson and talk, and, and see if we could use some of those, some of the tools around, some of the modern tools around engagement, crowdsourcing, platforms and other sorts of things where folks can, you know, rather than just come to meetings, but in addition to come to meetings, where folks can write up their own ideas and put, propose specific language and do, you know, participate in the process in different ways than we might have envisioned in the past, that we could use this process as a way to, to, to test run some of those. So I guess, so that would be my suggestion for how to, you know, to begin the process, to make progress on it, not, not tell the city organization and the staff, drop every, all your other projects and focus on this, but really put the onus on us to start the initial scoping work in conjunction with Mr. Robinson. And then with the intention of bringing back ideas and frameworks over the next, you know, two months, to be able to make additional progress and refine down to, to the real set of opportunities and questions that we might want to address.
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with this, that process. I'm thinking of the work we're willing to do, but that's okay. We should be prepared to do that. In terms of, so if you were saying, in, from a timeline perspective, two months that each council member have a portfolio or a list of topics out of these, we'll take back. So just because you said it, you're, I would take, for instance, city finance, budgetary issues, involve that, do some research, bring it back, and within two months, is what you're saying?
Okay.
And I will volunteer for that, if, that's what you're looking for.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I think the, the format that Sirch you laid out is good. And, you know, I think it's a good community trust building exercise, too, to knock those right off, off the bat. I would, I would also knock out council member compensation and just strike that as, I'm not interested. And I mean, this is public service. And, you know, I know that's, it has been an issue in a number of different jurisdictions, but I don't, I don't even want to go there unless, unless there's some compelling reason.
Well, so the only reason I might suggest the opposite is, is that right now we have, we do have authority. And you could, we, we might want to consider, or at least give our, you know, leave the option open for something that does not have the council make those decisions in the future.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm not proposing an increase, but, and, but, but simply that the, that the charter could speak to that issue of who, who decides that into the, into the future, and should the council have that authority under what circumstances and what have you? And we could ultimately say, look, it's just going to be, the system as it is, is the right one. But I, I think there might be, in terms of accountability, this might be an area that's worth having in, in the mix.
Okay.
Is that a general approach?
Yeah.
Does it sense?
Yeah.
Does involve a little bit of work. I'm, I'm happy to help as well. And I know Mr. Robinson's just thrilled about this project.
Okay, all right. Is that sufficient?
Well, I, I think, again, back to from a process standpoint, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that if you could, in the spirit of, so the public understands what we've just decided to do and how we're going to do it, at least the first two months.
Yeah.
We should put some definition around this, make sure it's public. So when Pat sees me at the nugget and tries to take my bag of Cheerios that I'm trying to get, she can ask me, hey, how you doing on that finance piece, right? You're going to want to know that I'm working on that piece, or Norma, whoever else is out there. But that's the trend, principles, I want to make sure we continue. So it's early on, we're in the sketching state, stage, sort of. But if we could do that, there's other areas that we didn't pick up on, we should make sure we find a home for those amongst the five of us to take on. So.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, I, one other idea I have, which is that this, this, the, the public engagement, civic engagement, crowdsourcing notion is of, of deep interest to the Code for America, our, to our partnership code for America. And there's some that's coming up. And I, and I, so I, I think it might be worth it, worthwhile approaching some of them around tools that might exist. So in addition to, for folks to be able to see, oh, here's the process as it's happening, here's what's going on, but also to really create, in the same way that our new West Sacramento Connect app provides a way, not just to know what the city's doing, but to, to be a part of it and to lead it and to drive it. If we can, you know, look for, for either tools that exist or that, that might be developed. I know there's, there are potential partners that might, that aren't interested in how, in how to help cities get even better in the 21st century at, at really engaging citizens in, in, you know, ways that are valuable and also don't, don't require citizens to spend 27 hours of their time on.
So if, and can we just kind of, I know you've outlined to us areas. So I heard, for, for myself at least, the issue of-
Finance and budget.
Finance and budget.
And elections.
I will.
You gave, okay. And then, I hope Mr. Kristoff might lead on public safety, taxation and revenue, city officers and personnel. And that, that category could include a range of personnel issues. In Folsom, one of the issues that they dealt with was, okay, who's, which officers of the city are officers that report directly to the council, and which ones report to the city manager, and under what circumstances? So that is one of the, that's one of, that is one of the live kinds of questions. For Mr. Johansson, the technology and innovation and the civic engagement space. And then Ms. Andy in the planning and zoning, the overall mission and scope question around, around this. And then the streamlining, the, the process streamlining as it relates to the ordinances, ordinance and resolution process, which is very, which is similar to the planning and zoning process streamlining. So, that makes sense.
Okay.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thanks, and thanks, Mr. Robinson. This was a really great, this was, the grid, I thought was really helpful in, in expanding on what the league has provided and identifying some opportunities, and also putting a wet blanket on stuff that doesn't deserve our, doesn't deserve our attention. So, thanks.
Okay. All right. That brings us then to the council calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to remind the council that next Wednesday is the Shin Mae Grand Opening events. There's the morning event from, end at noon, and then the evening celebration. Coming up on the 14th, also is going to be the West Gateway Place groundbreaking, and that's at 10:00 a.m. at the site. Couple items that aren't on your calendar in September, and we'll be getting more information out to you, is we have a tentative date for the Village Parkway groundbreaking of September 18th. We're still trying to finalize that. And then on your, not on your calendar, is the Farm to Fork Dinner that's coming up on the 27th of, of September. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Just briefly, there's obviously several wildfires surrounding our city, our region. We have a fire rig that's up in the Rocky Fire with four firefighters. They'll be swapped out tomorrow with four additional firefighters. Those are all subject to reimbursement from the state. But definitely our thoughts are with them in terms of being safe in that area. On water, the fires are linked to the drought, obviously, but in terms of water, there's a memo at the DIAS there with you. Forty-two percent reduction for July, citywide. For city facilities, it's 51%. So we're continuing to, to over exceed our, our goal, doing a great job as a community in terms of saving water. The streetcar was mentioned by the mayor in his comments. Staff intends to come back on the August 19th meeting with an update on the streetcar, so that those who are not on the policy advisory committee would, would, streetcar committee would get an update on that as well.
Questions?
City manager? I, I know that we've met, National Night, it's been mentioned a couple of times, but, you know, kudos to the, to the whole city staff team and the police department for its, you know, for its organizing role and its leadership role there. But, you know, as usual, the neighborhood block parties, the block captains who, and the hosts, did a fantastic job. It seems like every year, the block parties get more, the food gets, you know, more elaborate, there's more bounce houses and, and who knows what else. They're, they're really valued in the neighborhoods. And, 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 and one of the, the highlight of the night is when the police and police cars and the K-9 and the fire trucks and the city council members and the school board members stop by. So it's, it's very much appreciated in the neighborhood. And, and I know it's a lot of work. So thanks to the, thanks to the staff.
And, Mr. Mayor, I do have a, a different topic. I had the great honor of joining the city when our CFO of the Year, Philip Wright, received CFO of the Year for Government Public Agencies, and it was a really wonderful occasion. And I brought, you didn't see, Business Journal, and there's our, our great sign and, and the program. So congratulations. I see Mr. Wright's here throughout the whole meeting, and it, it's really a tribute, I think, to our, the excellence of our city staff, just to be, we just continue to get accolades and honors, both individuals and teams and projects and programs. So congratulations again.
Well deserved. And thanks for representing the council at the, at the awards event as well. Big, big kudos to Mr. Wright. Thank you. All right. City attorney report?
Attorney report?
Staff direction for members of the council. We have no future agenda item requests? So Mr. Johansson is moving that we be adjourned? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Andy. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Turned none. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned.